I call to order the special meeting of the Gig Harbor Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And I will begin with a roll call. I think, I know everyone here except James. I'm Mary Barber. I'm on City Council. And so Sue Brighton, I believe is excused.
Yes.
Janey Matan is excused. James Carr.
Here.
Patty Irwin? Is coming later?
I think she was fine.
Okay. Carrie Anne Eppert?
Yeah.
Lindsay Stover?
Yeah.
Stephanie Lyle?
Yeah.
And Miriam Batson, here. Okay. Today's meeting has one agenda item, and that is to review the application from the Gig Harbor Chamber of Commerce to conduct direct marketing organization services for tourism in the city of Gig Harbor. So I'm going to turn it over to Joshua Stecker.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, so kind of one other business item before we get into this, though, is send out the email so you all know that Mary is now the Chair of LTAC. Seth had a lot of time commitments that he had to step away from, so Council appointed Mary to fill in. Council reviews their committee assignments every year or so, so probably in January, they'll look at it again and see if Mary's doing an okay job and decide if they want her to stay or not. But for the rest of the year, it'll be Mary instead of Seth, so we will try to get her up to speed as much as we can till you go home. And then just, I don't know, the camera's not working for me for some reason, so I don't know what's going on, but just, just wanted to apologize to everybody. I know this meeting was short notice and a couple of people couldn't make it, and I appreciate you all taking the time to be here. Katrina and I wanted to get you all back together to talk about the proposal that we had from the, from the chamber that we talked about at our last meeting in June, June 8th, I think it was. I unfortunately wasn't able to be there for that, and there's some things that I kind of wanted to clear up and give to your attention. I know there were a lot of questions about that. And I think a lot of it kind of revolved around the idea of what the contract and what the agreement and what the structure of our agreement would look like with the chamber. So I'll give you a quick rundown of what we're expecting that to be, and then I'm sure there'll probably be questions, and I'll be happy to answer those, and we can, we can talk about what that would look like in more detail. But the way we do our LTAC contracts is they are all reimbursement contracts, so we pay for expenses that have been paid. So the chamber and their application, as you've seen, they have a list of things that they are planning to do, and they all have expenses tied to them. As they complete those expenses and turn in invoices, the city will reimburse them for those. The way we structure our LTAC contracts, it's not as rigid as what you see in their budget, so we're not going to expect them to spend $90,000 on, you know, hopeless if that's what's in their budget. They have the ability to change that around and spend that money however they want, however they think it's best to use it, as long as it's in the scope of LTAC. So when we say we're going to give them, you know, $275,000 per remainder of the year, that isn't necessarily, has to match exactly what's on that. As long as it's a tourism-related promotion expense, then we can refund it. So the chamber will have other expenses besides what's listed on there. They're already running a visitor center. That comes with some operational expenses that they could use this LTAC funding for. That'll make it a little bit more flexible for them, so they can get, you know, funding right away for expenses that are already occurring, rather than having to wait for invoices from production costs that, you know, they haven't, they haven't done yet. So that's one way that we can work with them on a cash flow, get some, get money moving to them quicker to get them up to running. Things like employee salaries, they can, they can send us invoice that request reimbursement for that, so that will be one of the options you have. There's really any number of things that can be qualified as a tourism-related expense, so it doesn't necessarily have to be what's on the list that they proposed. The contract that we work out, Katrina and I will work with here in the chamber and will hammer out the details of that. That's not really something that LTAC will be involved in too much, other than last meeting and this meeting where we talked about what they want to, what they're planning to do. But the actual contract and the actual review of invoices and reimbursement, that's all administrative stuff that we'll handle. So that's kind of what it'll look like. It's, we're not going to be giving a blank $500,000 check and saying, you know, see you next year and let us know what you did. That's not how this is going to work, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. We did, we wanted to come back to you today for this meeting because it's very important to us that this is a contract that extends beyond the end of this year. We're asking the chamber to start a program. We're asking them to hire employees and bring on full-time staff. And it's just not a reasonable ask of us as a, as a partner to have someone make that kind of commitment when we're not, when we're not making the commitment ourselves beyond this year. So staff's recommendation is that we do a full year and a half agreement with them, and that's why we're coming back to you, because we want to see if we can get LTAC. When we go to council, we'll make the same case to council. I believe council will probably support having a longer-term investment, because councils are committed to not using city staff for that, and because we don't have any city staff for these services anymore, that means they're going to want a commitment to having someone do it beyond the end of this year. So that's kind of what I wanted to explain. I know there may have been some other questions that came up in the meeting, and I'm happy to answer those, or if you've got specific things. What we'd like to have out of this meeting is have LTAC come back with the motion to fund for 2024 as well. So if that's something that LTAC is willing to consider, that would be, that would be really helpful for us. So at this point, I have no questions. I know Katrina's on the call too. She may have thoughts that she wants to share. But yeah.
Lindsay?
Yeah, I have two questions. First is just with the RCW for, for LTAC and for Lodging Committee, is it required to be a reimbursement grant? Or is that something that the city chooses to do?
That's how we choose to do it. We, we do have some flexibility in that, but there's no RCW requirement for that. But like the state auditor, we're still required to go through audits with the state every year, and they're going to want to have us be able to show something that shows that these expenses were used for tourism, so we do need to be able to, to show that. We're not strictly bound to reimbursement grant, but I think in, in this case and all of our other cases, it, it works out pretty well that way.
Okay, I just, I had brought that up in the last one, and so I don't think this is really a conversation for this meeting, but I do want to just bring up again, I think this is a conversation we should have when we look at the application process for next year and all of that, and just bring it up again, because it, the reimbursement grant, especially for the size of the, the chamber contract, it's really burdensome on small organizations, and so I just want to bring that up for a later discussion again. And my second question is if Sue brought any questions to you, because if I remember correctly, she's the one that kind of brought up the amended motion to only do the half-year. And so I don't believe anybody that is currently on the call had a problem with it originally.
Yeah.
Lindsay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, my camera, I don't know what's going on. But we, we do intend to have an internal discussion with Josh and the finance team as well about, I know that there had been some lapses in reimbursements or struggles with that, and so we're going to look at that. In terms of the contract with the chamber, you know, we took in to consideration what the LTAC said. It will not be likely a full reimbursable reimbursement contract. There likely will be things that we will negotiate with the con, with the chamber. For instance, you know that they have to have certain contracts that they'll have to pay for, such as Datafy and those types of things that they'll need to pay for completely upfront in order to get the program going, as well as staff, and so we will negotiate with the chamber, what things that they can, the, the, the portions of the contract that they can receive upfront as you're going to do this work, so you'll need this cash flow upfront. And then what types of things will be reimbursable? And so it, although it is a reimbursement contract, there will be certain allowances for cash flow upfront, essentially.
That's great to hear. Thanks for clarifying, Katrina.
Yeah.
Okay, Carrie Anne?
Yeah, so I'm still, still new at LTAC, so just, I don't know if this is already, it's just like a standard thing that you guys do, but I think with something this size, it would be great to have maybe like a quarterly, just one-page summary, especially in this first year of what they're doing, how it's going. If they need help with anything, you know, and I'd be happy to, you know, also be involved in the process with you, Miriam, as you guys get off the ground. But just some, something where, where we can just have a little bit more insight as it gets going as to what's actually happening and what some of the programs and things that they're doing, and just so that we can kind of keep track of, of the progress of it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so that, that probably will be something that's in the contract. I think we, what we would like to ask Miriam to do, and I, I don't know if we've had this conversation, but at our quarter in the LTAC meetings, it'd be good to hear from the chamber on what's, just, just what's going on.
Yeah, I was, I was planning on, you know, whether you guys wanted it or not, because it is a lot of money, and I want to make sure that there's a full accounting on it, and I want it to be transparent and have LTAC input into some of the things that we're working on. I mean, we've had a lot of conversations, not only internally with LTAC members, you know, in terms of things that you guys want to see, but then I've also had conversations with Pierce County Tourism, Travel Tacoma, and there's a consultant in Alaska that you had turned me on to. And there's, and another consultant who we plan to hire to help us get this set up. So, you know, there's going to be some of those things, and some of their input has just been incredibly helpful for us to kind of take what we have proposed and really massage it more. And so I want, you know, everybody, you know, once we get this going, to know fully where we're, where we're headed with it. And it's all going to be based on data. So with the Datafy program that, you know, we, that the city has had, there's history there that's going to be important for us to do some comparatives with, that I think will be able to show, okay, this is, you know, here's some of the data from before, and here's where we're, where we are now, and here's where we are after running this campaign or that campaign. So, and interestingly, Travel Tacoma has access to the Gig Harbor data.
Oh, do they?
They do. And so they go into it periodically, so they have asked that they continue to have access to the data. So it's rather interesting. I mean, who didn't?
And I'm, I'm pretty sure that the City Council is going to want to see quarterly reports, not presentations, but at least some kind of update on what's happening, so that'll probably be baked into the contract.
I would hope so. For context, since Miriam mentioned that I had turned her on to someone in Alaska. When I lived in Alaska, I was the manager for the agency that had the Alaska Tourism Marketing Council PR account. And so I had introduced Miriam to the person who now runs that agency. So the way that this is structured is really consistent with a lot of the direct marketing organization contracts in different destination areas. So I don't think that this is doing anything untoward. The one thing that I will do to protect Miriam and their interests is their contract will be with the city. So that is really who they answer to. That doesn't mean that they don't answer to other entities, but the contract and the, whether or not they fulfill it is with the city of Gig Harbor. And so those quarterly reports, which we did also, are to the city with other people also being interested parties. Sorry, I coughed. Stephanie?
Yeah, so first I just want to say I have every confidence in Miriam and her team doing this work. But secondly, I have to express a concern about the allocation of funds, because most of the people on this call, I don't think have the deep, deeper history with how LTAC has kind of operated in the past. And at one point, I'm not saying this is how we want to continue, but at one point, there was a 25%, 25%, 25%, 25% allocation. 25% of the fund was DMO, 25% of the fund was staffing at the city, 25% of the fund was reserved for capital projects that the city owns that are tourism-related, and 25% went to the grant program. That equaled about $125,000 that went to the grant program. So obviously, those allocations have changed, but with a $500,000 contract, that's half the fund. So I just put that forward to say, are, are people okay with that? And Miriam, if you didn't get that full $500,000, what would you reduce from your budget to be able to accomplish some of these tasks for less?
Stephanie, can I ask a clarifying question on that? The, from what I recall of you just saying that a quarter was city staff, a quarter was DMO, and then a quarter was capital and a quarter was grants. So Miriam essentially would be taking half, because there would be no city staff allocation or the, or us having a DMO, so that would essentially be half of the allocation.
Right, but the point of that whole conversation was that that percentage didn't work. And it did, it was kind of determined that it wasn't necessarily the right approach, and I use that as an example simply to say, I think we have some options here in terms of how the fund is distributed. Is it absolutely necessary? Because really, Katrina, what's the cost-saving to the city if they're not paying a staff person to do this work, but they're paying another entity? You know, it's, it's actually more, it seems like, than what the city was getting for their part of the contract.
Okay, thanks for clarifying your comments. That helps me understand. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, Eric, it's okay. We've probably should take a look at LTAC's fund and what they have available, and I've got a little bit prepared to talk about that, so I want to share my screen here really quickly, so you can kind of get a picture of where we're at. Okay, this is a very, very rough, high-level look at where the budget is, but council's now on a two-year budget cycle, so we're in the middle of, well, the first quarter of that. So it's 2023 to 2024. The revenues that we have available for 2023 and 2024 is that 2.1 or 5 million that's, that's there on the top line. We've already allocated the funding for 2013, so that's this 1.317 million here. That was already recommended by LTAC and approved by council. We've gone through that process and it's been allocated. And I've broken it down over here on the side, so you can kind of see where, where it all went. So we're talking about DMO services today, so the city's asked for DMO services for 2023, it was 475. The chamber's is 500,000 for next year, so pretty much in the same bright line, same ballpark. We had a one-time $500,000 allocation for the sports complex. That'll be in 2023, possibly here in order to 2024, depending on when we actually spend that money. And then we had another 195, 190,000 in operations grants, so that's the Waterfront Alliance, the History Museum, and Harbor Wild Watch. And then 150,000 in events. So when you take out all of what we committed in 2023 and the 275 that the chamber wants for 2023, that's just going to come right out of the city's 475. So that'll leave the city with 200,000 to cover what we spent this year. Which, which should be fine, I think we're well within that.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, can I jump in or are you done?
Well, let me just go into 2024 real quickly. So the amount we have to work with for 2024 is that 828 there at the bottom. So if we fully fund the chamber, that would be 328 left for the downtown water front alliance, the Harbor History Museum, and for, you know, the special events, which is actually almost exactly what we funded last year. So that, that is a snapshot of where the fund is right now. So yes, Stephanie, if you have questions, you want to jump in there?
So thanks for that, Josh. It's helpful. I do recall conversations early in this process. We get related to the 475, because the original ask was for 350,000 with the claim that $175,000 would be sponsored or provided as in-kind. So that number jumped to 475 as part of those conversations, and I was like, wait a second, and, and, I mean, to be honest, this has been a contentious topic for a while, and, and I'm not, like, again, I'm not trying to say that the chamber isn't worth it, but I am trying to say that we need to make sure that we're not just borrowing these older figures to propose what's appropriate for the future. I think hopefully, we as a committee can come up with a way to make sure that the funds that are, are earned are distributed in an equitable way, and my thinking is that perhaps there are startup costs that can be paid for in this early process, and then maybe that price goes down. Obviously, anybody that, I mean, because basically she's starting a business, she's going to have startup costs, so it makes perfect sense that there would be additional costs. But if there is a way that maybe those can go down, then that, you know, frees up funds for other things if necessary, like the sports complex or the roof of the Scansy NetJet or whatever it happens to be. So that's my thinking along these lines, and I just want to make sure that we're being not too quick to just say, sure, let's do this, but to say, let's really look at this in detail.
Yeah, so just, just to that point, I would say when we're looking at the 475 that the city requests and the 500 that the chamber requests, I would say that those are really apples and oranges, because the chamber, the chamber spells out what they want to spend that 500,000 for on their list, and it's different than what the city was wanting to spend it on. So when you're looking at the merits of whether or not to fund that amount, I think looking at the chamber's list and see what's on there, and we make our judgment call based on that, not based on what the city intends to do or what we thought that we were going to do in past years, because it's really the chamber's program, and what they want to do is, you know, it's up to them what they want to do. They're, they're going to be the ones that we're trusting to make those decisions, so. Yeah, and I just, I know Katrina wants to jump in here too, but just to move on from 2024 into future years, the revenue that, that this fund brings in is almost exactly about 500,000. That's what it was last year, and we're tracking almost identically for lodging tax revenue to what we tracked last year. So when we look at the 2024 budget, and there's enough there to cover all the things that we might want to do similar to last year, the thing we have to keep in mind is 2025 is coming and beyond, and we're not going to have a huge surplus in that fund, so we're going to have to figure out how to make it sustainable with, you know, an annual revenue of 500,000. So I think the chamber's aware that their operating budget will have to shrink in future years, that this is kind of a startup amount. And, you know, we may have to go back to the general fund or other options for how we were funding the Harbor History Museum before and the Downtown Waterfront Alliance before. So those are conversations we'll have to have next budget cycle. We're not, it won't come up this budget cycle, because we're not going to amend anything in the lodging tax budget, as far as I know. But, you know, summer of 2024, that's something that this group will have to start taking over. Yeah, Katrina, if you want to jump in.
Thank you. Yeah, Stephanie was talking. I was hoping that Miriam could talk to us a little bit about, I know that these, well, I'm assuming that these, this is kind of higher due to startup costs, and I was kind of hoping that Miriam could let us know the plan and how some of what, you know, if the costs are anticipated to go down in future years, or what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, exactly, because I was looking through some of my budget detail, just kind of look and do a comparison. So there is, it is heavier on this year, because there are different pieces of equipment that we need to get, data sources that will need to start up. There will be a continued membership or annual payment to Datafy. But it, that, that's, unfortunately, it's just a matter of getting access to it, so it's not like a a build-out for the first year that's going to be more expensive than ongoing. So I'm not anticipating that number necessarily going down, but so there's, there is a piece there. I think what we would, would shift things is we would really take a look at potentially quantity of print items versus what we do digitally, and based on some of the numbers that we see from some of the campaigns that we plan to run in the future. So where we would see a difference, you know, some of the, like, small tools and equipment, that would probably be considerably less for 2024. Ops operations, that stuff will probably remain around the same. There will be probably this is where I care. I would say areas that we can definitely look at as being different would be like in some of those guides. Maybe we don't do as many of them in 2024 for the Eat, Drink, Explore guides. And it, it may be that after we get going with it, that it's an app with a small print, a small quantity of print for the smaller guides. So that's the direction I'd like to see it go, especially after having some conversations with some of the consultants we've had, we've been speaking with lately. And then the county is really looking at how can, because they're building their 10-year tourism plan. And so that 10-year plan, they've got a consultant coming in, and we sat, Matt and I went and sat in on a town hall session they had. And what the concept of what they're trying to do is really build out the idea of going, you know, come to, and nobody knows Pierce County, so it's going to be Travel Tacoma. So it's like, come to Tacoma where you can experience from the mountain down to the water. And so really having that tie of the entire process and having all of that content available throughout the county. And the county is looking at doing some kind of a signature event. They're also going after World Cup. I talked with Dean yesterday, or a day before, after having a conversation with Jennifer Seagull on Saturday or Tuesday, and you know, World Cup is something that they're looking at, different cities and different areas, and so what they're trying to do is really put in a bid for, you know, being one of those cities in the country that people come to. And so if, if we're successful in that, we will get overflow of people into Gig Harbor during the World Cup. So, so there are some larger things, but they also, the county also wants to do kind of a signature event and have that something that can then spread out throughout the county. And it makes total sense, because some people are going, they'll want that downtown experience of Tacoma. Others, we know already from talking with Sue, a lot of their people may be coming to the area for a conference, but they prefer to stay in a smaller town like Gig Harbor. And she says that happens frequently for her. So, so it's, you know, there's a number of things that we're doing that we can do in cooperation with other groups, like visit Bain Bridge and visit Kitsap, where we can do some collaborative pieces, where we can bring the costs down. And so those are kind of things that we're leaning in towards. We don't necessarily have to build bridge, but, you know, we can work smarter and get more advertising made for a buck. Does that answer that, Stephanie, for you?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely get a better sense of it, yeah.
All right, we lost our video screens in here, so.
Does anyone have other questions? I'm looking at Josh's computer, so I can see if anybody's raising their hands.
One, one more thing that I'll add to the, talking about the 2025 budget. So we'll be projecting those revenues probably right in line with the 500,000 going forward, but we do have some surplus that isn't accounted for in this 2023, 2024 budget. Because when we, when we adopted this budget, we gave, we had an estimate of around 20, we thought we'd have at the end of 2022. And of course, that was pretty conservative, so I think there's probably another 100, 150,000 that will carry over and will, will shake out when we start looking at the 2025 numbers. So we will have some surplus to work with, so it's not going to be just that 500, but we won't know until we get to that part of the process, for sure.
And I will say this, and probably shoot my own foot, but, you know, we don't have the money today, but whatever money we're given, we will work with whatever the budget is, so I just, that according.
Thank you. Does anybody want to make a motion? Please? To recommend funding, maybe? I guess my other question would be, what kind of direction do you want to take today? If you don't, I'm not, I would like to make a motion, but would like to have this recommended, but it's up to this committee also. I think this is really important work for the city as a whole to do, so.
Just commentary really quick. I think the numbers align based upon what Josh was showing, but I think some of the, you know, plans in terms of scaling down seem counterintuitive. Like, you know, getting rid of print and scaling those items down in comparison to growing. Like, you know, getting rid of print and scaling those items down in comparison to growing traffic and ultimately having, you know, more income revenue coming in to Gig Harbor should be goal. Also focusing on the harbor itself versus county plan. I'd love to see you guys ultimately have a really focused plan in terms of what you guys are going to be doing with the funds. I want to give you guys the funds. What are you doing with it? Like, to me, that was a little choppy in terms of the direction that you guys are still going.
Okay, yeah, let me clear that up. So our ultimate goal is heads and beds. Our ultimate goal is bringing tourism here where they're going to be staying multiple days. Yes, there will be day trippers that will come as a result of some of the marketing that we do for this, but our goal is for entirely for Gig Harbor, you know, what's in it for us. So we're not going to be spending ads and content pieces on things that are not going to have the ability to bring people here, so that is the entire goal for us, and we are, we will always remain focused on Gig Harbor. Yes, it's nice to play nicely with the county, and there may be a really big event that we may want to participate in that isn't available today, but down the road, when it is something to consider, that would be something that I, we would bring back to LTAC. Because we want everybody's thoughts on it prior to jumping. You know, because it's going to take, you know, larger events are going to take a community focus. And I, I think of the PGA tournament, and that was in town a few years back. I mean, the chamber ran a shuttle service for parking, so people could stay here, and then we ran shuttle service over, so people didn't have to try to find parking there, so that our entire focus is on bringing people to the community, because once we get people here, we know they will spend, we know they will go to the points of interest, having the itineraries for the day built out, having things like that, so that people know, okay, if you have kids, here are some really great places to visit, here are their hours. Definitely go to these locations, that type of thing. And then we also, everything that we're going to be producing will have a section in it for here's where to stay. Because that was one of Sue's big pieces that, you know, we need to have that built into pretty much everything we do. So that people know, okay, here are all the activities, should you need to stay the night, here's where you go. So it's just an additional piece, that'll probably be kind of some evergreen content that'll go in everything. You know, have it in a couple of pages, but in the, and then built out and some of the larger emphasized things, so. That's kind of the thought, our focus for that, and then it, and the pieces, there are rap cards that need to be developed that are incredibly out of date. The website needs to be taken care of, there, there is also the, the whole branding component, and then we'll have, we'll end up working with the city to see what kind of content is currently available that we would be able to take, the issue is going to be, do we have to create all new content? And so Matt is gearing up for that in the event that we do. And so that's where some of the camera equipment is coming into play, that's where some of the technology components for this year are coming about, because I know the city has, you know, content that they have paid for and purchased, but there's a blurry line between is it tourism or is it city content? So, you know, there might be some assets we'll be able to use. But well, you know, we may have to go from scratch, so. So that answer your question? James?
Yeah, you give, I feel as if you just gave, you know, more direction in terms of where you guys want to go. I'd love to see, you know, a conversation or incorporation of social platforms tie into this, I think that's a way to reach out to people in terms of having you know, free outreach, and ultimately just having somebody who's representing the harbor and constantly reaching out and reaching out and, you know, bringing people in that way, so. Thank you for, you know, giving more direction in terms of where you guys are going. That's just really where I'm at in trying, you know, in terms of trying to piece together exactly where you know, you guys want to ultimately, you know, issue funds and so on, but I'll pass the buck here to the other members who have their hands raised.
Yeah, and one of the things that we did notice is that there currently isn't an Instagram page for this at Gig Harbor. Well, so, and that, is there?
It just needs to be activated.
It's, it's, okay.
It hasn't been posted to since three years ago.
But we're, but we've, yeah, Matt is really good with digital marketing, but that's kind of his area of specialty, so. I think that'll be it.
And, and the city will be, will be making our resources available to the chamber as much as we can, so. Whether that means handing over the Instagram account to them, that may be an option, probably definitely handing over the Gig Harbor website. And we, we have a photo library that, that there's no reason why we can't share this with the chamber, so. That will all be stuff that we'll talk about.
Okay, Stephanie?
I'll, I'll go, but Carrie Anne had her hand up first.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Stephanie. Just, I just wanted to put in my plug, I was trying to unmute my, I wouldn't unmute a minute ago, so. I just want to say, at this point, I've kind of talked to Miriam about this, and I have full faith in her abilities and the chamber's abilities. I would say we have to do something at this point, and I think they presented a pretty good plan, and I think she has a really great way forward and an understanding of what needs to happen. And I just want, we need to get something started now, because it's going to take some time to develop this, and we really need something robust by December, like November, December, to lead us into the winter and the off-season, especially just speaking from a downtown perspective. And we, we don't have anything now, there's, there's not much going on. And, you know, any support, Miriam, that we can give you, that the alliance can give you, we're happy to do that, and I have full faith in your ability to do it, and we need to do something, and so I'm happy to make a motion, if you guys are ready, because I think this is a great opportunity for Gig Harbor, for the chamber. And I'm excited to kind of see what they do and, and to really kind of hear as it progresses how, how things are changing and happening and bringing people in to Gig Harbor, as I feel like we're a little bit behind the curve right now, it's been a year or so that we haven't had this, and you can see things kind of dwindling down, and I would love to see it start to search the other direction, so.
I think now is a good time for a motion, Carrie Anne.
Stephanie had something first.
Yeah, sorry, I really feel like it's important to clarify one area, and that is, if we were to make a motion, would that motion include like startup costs and having a number for what that startup cost would be? Because personally, if I were to make a motion, I would make a motion that included a recommendation to council and staff that a certain amount of money be given upfront from the funds, so that, to Lindsay's point, so that Miriam can get started. Otherwise, it's going to be, you know, pay out all this money and then try to get reimbursed before all those bills come in, it's a hassle for everybody. So that was what I would recommend, and to try to understand how much that would be. My other thing that I wanted to just stress here is that, you know, Miriam, when you start building content, don't forget that these other organizations like Harbor Wild Watch and the museum and Downtown Waterfront Alliance, we have some great content that we have all produced, especially during COVID and with COVID grants, and you know, from short films to great videos to informative things that are just fun to put out there. It really gives people a flavor of what they would experience in Gig Harbors, so that content is available, and you shouldn't have to feel like you have to build everything from scratch, because I know how much work that is. We've all experienced that, so it's a ton of work. My, my last thing is, I think it's really important to figure out using the data that the organizations have to provide as part of their reports for LTAC. How do we, you know, as part of your planning process, figure out how the Datafy thing connects to the actual boots-on-the-ground data that is collected on a day-to-day basis for all of our programs? These things don't always say the same thing or reveal the same information, and so I think it's important to take that into consideration, because data is one, data has come, comes in lots of forms. But for organizations like the museum, I mean, we literally gather every zip code from every visitor, and that information tells us, you know, what state, what city, where the people came from, and it may not be exactly the same as Datafy, it would be an interesting experiment to look at.
It would be interesting to compare.
Yeah.
It gives another data point to look at.
Do you ever did a comparison between those two?
No, I didn't.
Stephanie did, and I'm stepping in more of that conversation quite a bit, and there, there did seem to be discrepancies and inconsistency in the data, but, yes.
So I think Josh wanted to address your first point.
Yeah, just to your first point, Stephanie, so, so what we need from LTAC is a recommendation on amount to fund, and the actual structure of the contract, and how we, how we work out the chamber to make it workable for them. I think we've got consensus that LTAC would like to see administration keep up with a contract that's flexible enough, so that chamber can get up and running, and and that's great, that's what we need to hear, but as far as your motion itself, that should just be the actual dollar amount to fund, so it needs to be at high level.
And Josh, is this for both years or one year?
For both years, so the suggested motion on the agenda that's printed on there, if you have that, that's, that's what we'd like to see. Yeah.
And Josh, I just wanted to throw in there too, I agree with Carrie Anne and what she's saying, I have full faith in Miriam and the chamber, and we just need something down, down here, doing, getting some marketing out there. I'm wondering if, because in past years, data has always been an issue, you know, hoteliers have been asking for it and they don't necessarily get it, and to Stephanie's point, she asked for data to be able to compare and wasn't getting it, wondering if we, it would be appropriate to add into this motion basically on the condition that a quarterly reporting component will be included in the contract, and that the chamber will work with the city and the LTAC committee on what data would be included in that reporting. Would it be appropriate to include that in the motion, Josh?
Not in the motion, because as an advisory board, the council, your, your only role is to recommend the amounts that are funded, but as, as an advisory group with staff present, you can we've heard from you, it's basically an informal motion to staff to say, this is what we'd like to see, and staff will take that, Katrina and I will take that into consideration. It's not really within LTAC's official scope of their duty, but, I mean, we, we know what you want to see, and we will work with that, so.
We will, we will work with Miriam to add that in, as well as what Stephanie said about the, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, it is a reimbursable contract, but there will be a component for startup, and we'll work with Miriam on what that amount is upfront and make sure that it's fair. So that she's able to get this program up and running, because the city definitely agrees with all of you that you know, there is kind of a downslide in, you know, a coordinated effort on, on this, and I, I think it's definitely our goal to get something up and running as quickly as possible to support all of your organizations.
Perfect, thank you. I, Carrie Anne, do you want to do it? I'll do it, who wants to?
I'll do it, I, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to approve the chamber to fully fund the amount, it was 500,000, right? Is that what we said?
Plus 275.
Yeah, it's, I have the motion in front of me, if you want me to do it.
Go ahead, you do it.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me.
So I moved to recommend funding for a lodging tax grant to the Gig Harbor Chamber of Commerce in the amount of 275,000, 650,000 dollars in 2023, and 500,000 in 2024, with a reduction in the lodging tax grant to the city from 975,000 to 700,000 in 2023.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Or should say any more discussion?
I have one clarifying question. So the 475 that was allocated to the city is basically going to be really allocated to this contract, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Great, motion has passed. Is there, there is, it's my understanding there's nothing else before the committee?
That's all the business we have for you.
Katrina has her hand up.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to state to the committee that we really thank you for coming last minute to this meeting and re-going through this with us for additional discussion, it's part of our commitment to boards and commissions that we will not take things forward to council without coming forward to have the discussion with our boards and commissions so that you are not blindsided, I know that that had happened in the past. And we really value your input, and I think today's conversation was very valuable for us, so I just wanted to state that, you know, we value your time and your input on this, and we will continue to do this in the future, so thanks so much for your time today.
You're welcome, thank you.
Our pleasure, good luck.
Yeah, thank you for all of your confidence in our ability, so. And we will be reaching out when we get to the point of creating an inventory of all the assets within the community that are available, so. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, everyone, I appreciate everyone's support and assistance, and bearing with me as I figure out what I'm doing here.
Welcome to the committee, Mary.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you guys, enjoy the sunshine.
Have a nice holiday, everyone, be safe.
You too.
Bye-bye.